Sounds good, thanks Mayor. So, thank you for getting together for this special meeting. As you're aware, last week, Amazon, I believe it was September 7th, Amazon released an RFP for a second headquarters. And Greater MSP, which is a regional organization that coordinates economic development opportunities, sent out an email flash. And this is something that they do frequently with different sites, but it basically alerted communities that there will be one effort to submit a site in Minnesota. So, this is a national competitive process. And Greater MSP and DED will be working together to bring forward one proposal on behalf of Minnesota. Ben's gonna go through the RFP later, and so you'll see that really only communities in the metro are gonna qualify, so it's not really a statewide effort, but there'll just be one proposal coming from Minnesota.
Just a quick note, are those both state agencies, this DED and?
Greater MSP is a public-private partnership. So, it's somewhat, it has some government funding from memberships from the state and cities, but it's mostly a private entity. And it was formed maybe about 10 years ago, recognizing that Minnesota did not have a regional organization that does economic development. And Amazon's actually the prime example of why it was formed, because there are many times when a metropolitan area needs to put one foot forward, and we weren't previously able to do that as a metro without Greater MSP. And then DED is the Department of Employment and Economic Development under the Department of Commerce at the state level.
Got it, thank you, that's helpful. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no problem, yeah. Feel, anybody feel free, we are trying to be informal. So, we saw the RFP come through, and Ben and I sat down and did a quick, you know, check, check. We can, we can tick off most of the boxes in the Amazon RFP. You know, we didn't, we're not trying to make this a lengthy discussion, so we didn't bring it. I'm not gonna go into great detail, but in our comp plan and in our strategic plan, we've talked about wanting to diversify our tax base, to get more commercial industrial. We've specifically envisioned the site at the corner of County Route 10 and County Route 11 as a site where we'd like to see more office, more corporate headquarters kind of target. And so, what we wanted to do is have a discussion with the council about whether going forward and submitting Victoria as a possible site for Amazon to consider is something that you would like to do. We've not really had that kind of conversation with this council. So, even if the answer at the end of the night is no, this isn't the right opportunity, we're really hoping to have a good discussion about future development in Victoria and just be able to sort of learn from your thoughts and hopefully learn from each other. Disclaimer, Ben and I are at various times maybe gonna sound like we're arguing for the project or against the project. Neither of us actually even have an opinion right now about whether this is a good fit. It's just so new, we really haven't had time to think it through ourselves. But we'll, we've agreed to sort of play devil's advocate for each other. So, if Ben's arguing for it, I'm gonna try to argue against it, or vice versa. Those aren't really our personal preferences or positions. We just wanna have a good dialogue with you guys tonight. So, here's what we're gonna do, we do have a quick PowerPoint. Ben is gonna walk you through the RFP, which you have a copy of in front of you. I didn't publish it in the packet, but it's publicly available. It's getting a lot of nationwide attention, so if someone wants to look at it at home, just Google "Amazon HQ 2 RFP" and there's copies will be available. Ben's gonna walk through what that RFP looks like and how it might fit with Victoria. And then, we're gonna lead you through a focused conversation that hopefully, at the end of it, will get to the point of making some decisions about the particular proposal. But again, I really see just the opportunity to have this discussion as a learning opportunity for all of us. So, Ben?
Thanks Lori. So, I will walk through the RFP, I'm not gonna go kind of point by point or line by line, but kind of hit what I see as some of the big picture reasons and kind of what Lori said, where she and I might wear multiple hats. In terms of being Community Development Director, a lot of what I'm gonna say are why it's a good idea for the council to discuss the opportunity at hand. More for how does it potentially benefit the community in the first place. So, you have copies of it in front of you, so I'll try to refer to page numbers. And again, I'm not gonna go through it by line, but in terms of high-level things, not gonna focus on the cover page, I think probably the first thing any of you would've read was that initial page that just says the purpose for Amazon of going through the RFP process, what they're looking for and hoping to accomplish. Page 1, which is not the cover sheet, just gives a full overview of everything that's been done. And what you'll see a lot throughout this RFP document from Amazon is they relate a lot of what has been done in their Seattle office to what they think is potentially able to happen with the second headquarters. More as a way to, from my side of things, it's great to see the large dollar amounts that just the corporate headquarters can bring into a community, but you'll see there's a lot of residual impact that bringing this type of a project into a community can also have on the surrounding, not only community, but the region, which is why it's so important for the state to have their best foot forward, so to speak, in terms of responding to the proposal. So, on page 1, talking about as many fif, as many as 50,000 new jobs, all generally considered to be high-end, where the average salary is about $100,000. They do provide those nice little built-in disclaimers that it's over the next 10 to 15 years. So, they're giving themselves some flexibility, that it's not all at once, it's not some crazy like, we're literally building a town in a day kind of thing. But it is important to understand that they have over $50 billion capital expenditures that are described in detail in this RFP. So, we think about, how do we bring a diversity of tax base to the community? You've got 50,000 jobs that would land in your community, and they're all relatively high-paying. It's kind of like the greatest thing you could possibly hope for in terms of bringing more of a corporate model to the local community. Further down on this page, again, where they're relating to what kind of residual investments were made in Seattle from 2010 to 16. They saw an additional $38 billion into the city's economy, where every dollar invested by Amazon in Seattle generated an additional $1.4 in addition, in additional economic development. At the very bottom, where they get into some bullet points of like where they have preferences, again, as Lori mentioned when she and I were going through this RFP, this is the area where we can say, yes, we're starting to qualify for what they're looking for and why we thought it would be beneficial to spend some time talking with you all about the opportunity. If you don't have any questions on anything on page 1, I'm gonna skip to page 2. Simply to highlight kind of that table at the bottom of the page, where again, it's a bunch of, bunch of site requirements, pretty high-level. So, think about, you're kind of at that 10,000 scale over the community. Again, an area that we can check all the boxes, so to speak. We are 30 miles from a population center. We are 45 minutes from an international airport. We're within one or two miles of major highways and arterial roads, if you think about 212. Access to man's mass transit. I think there's a way, if there was a desire for our community to submit a response, that we can tell the story of where we are with respect to mass transit being in close proximity to the site. And certainly, depending on decisions that are made here between Lori and I, we can have more conversations with those transit agencies along with the state on how if we end up, ended up being the package that gets submitted for Minnesota, how do all those stars align, so to speak, to pull it off? So, not really worried about anything in those core qualities. Continuing to move forward, page 3 is more that high-level explanation of where they said they were, they invested X amount in Seattle, and here's kind of the additional bucket, so to speak, of investment that followed them. And at the bottom of that page, where it says priority for consideration, and they do say in no particular order. Bullet point number 2, greenfield site of approximately 100 acres, certified or pad-ready with utility infrastructure in place. We'll explain kind of that 10 and 11 site and how we envision that being able to qualify to meet that priority for consideration. The rest of them, we don't fall into those buckets, but that's really their attempt at saying they're looking for communities to be creative in their response here. So, if you fall into any of these larger buckets, they wanna hear your story of how you feel like you're there and why it's advantageous for them. Page 4, at the top, gets a little bit more in-depth on their capital investment structure and timeframe. So, they don't necessarily put specific years to individual phases, but they do identify that for them, it is a phased approach and what those capital investment dollars look like just from their standpoint, even from phase 1. So, if the total investment is potentially over $3 billion, that initial investment, they're saying somewhere still in that $300 to $600 million range, and then larger buckets that get added on to, on additional phases. The big thing that I thought would just be worthwhile talking through, page 5. Their key preferences and decision drivers. Some of these things are items that our community in general drives a lot more than say what the state would, and then vice versa. There are things with labor force and logistics. Some bits of information that Amazon's expecting to get in a request that aren't solely Victoria's responsibility to have information at hand. Those would be some of the partnership opportunities with DED and Greater MSP along with the other partners involved in this effort, that we would put that information together. But the site and building, so again, telling that story of why 10 and 11 would make a lot of sense for this type of a corporate campus environment. I think that we can put a lot of effort into describing why it's attractive, that they have the ability to build kind of from scratch. They can mold and shape what that looks like to meet their needs, but also being kind of right in the heart of where growth is happening in this part of our metro, I think is really important for them. So, bringing a lot of new jobs to the region, certainly they would probably hire within the region, but they bring a lot of people in. The ability to tell the story of your new people, have the ability to also build themselves a home, have a lifestyle that's gonna be attractive for them. That first category, I think we can tell a pretty good story there. The capital and operating costs, as they outline here, looking for a business-friendly environment and attract structure that would be a high priority. This is something that I think we're looking for you to weigh in on tonight. People, communities, excuse me, not people, communities typically that find success in responding to these types of projects usually have a, an adopted priority list of we're willing to put these types of things into play when these levels of investment are being considered. So, things like tax increment financing, abatement. The city could take a strong position to do acquisition, to make everything ready for whatever the user is, whether it's Amazon or someone else. As you're well aware, we don't have utilities down to 10 and 11 today, but we have enough information that if the city said, we want to pursue this based upon what it brings, we could put things into motion fairly quickly that get those things as a city-driven and led project down to make it feasible. But that general mindset of being willing to step forward and say, yes, there's a lot to bite off of, but we know the benefit outweighs that initial investment is something that we wanna probably hear from council for tonight. Incentives relates directly to that. There's certainly going to be some package of incentives, whether it's from state agencies or some partnership things, that we won't be the only level of investment. But I think having a, a joint effort in how far we're willing to go as a community is gonna set the stage for where the state would review our initial response as well as what a final proposal that Amazon ends up looking like. The other thing that we have much more control on than some of the others, the time to operations. So, as they've sculpted this RFP, talking about greenfield sites specifically, they're looking for somewhat that shovel-ready condition. I think even though we don't have everything in this site completely put together under one ownership, the fact that it's basically farmland, it can be turnkey rather quickly, and I think we can tell that story and also project a willingness to put a lot of focused energy on getting any of like their city approvals done from a zoning, building plan review, getting some of that critical infrastructure reviewed. The timeframes for them, when they compare what we do compared to a metropolitan agency, we can be much more nimble on accommodating them. So, another reason why, even though we're not right in the core of a metro area, we can still be attractive from the standpoint of meeting their objective of getting their headquarters to up and operational quickly. The cultural community fit's kind of a split response, I would say, in terms of the community that they're looking for isn't necessarily just Victoria. They're, wanna come to the state of Minnesota if they're going to come here, and they want the Twin Cities metro to be that culture fit that jives with them. So, we're not alone there, we do have some part of that influence in responding to the RFP, but it would be kind of a blended approach of Victoria is positioned this way within a much larger welcoming business environment of the Twin Cities. The rest of the RFP certainly is rather detailed. Page 6 in particular, the information requested. I think the reason of having the meeting here tonight and the discussion we hope to get into here in a moment was really to figure out, should we start working on these itemized information pieces or components in order to meet the timeframe of getting something for DED and MSP to consider this Friday? So, we can go into any of those items if you'd like to. I think all of them certainly could be attainable if it's the will of the council to move forward with the response to the RFP.
Do you think four days is enough time to put something together?
I think it can be. Again, I mean, it is a big effort, there's a lot of positives to draw out of just taking the extra time to put it together. I think we'd certainly be looking for some assistance from other professionals to get some of the materials created. It would certainly not be ideal.
It'd basically be, staff drops everything this week, works on this to get something in by Friday. If, if Victoria was selected by Greater MSP indeed, which I understand is gonna happen maybe within that following week, then it would be another drop everything, work on this up until the October 19 deadline.
Do we have, do we have access to labor statistics?
That is one of the things specifically that MSP and DED are working to.
Because where do we get the people?
Well, that's, one of the things that's looking at here is, that's a great question. There are a number of, if you go out and Google this RFP and city selection, there are a number of rankings of cities. And so, they're ranking it by airports, job growth, labor force education, mass transit, universities. We're number 18th for airports, we're 11th for job growth, we're 8th for labor force education, we're not listed for mass transit, and we're not listed for universities. So, three of the five.
Minnesota is not considered a leading contender for those headquarters right now.
Yeah, right. And, and so, what, what gets pushed out? I think this is a wonderful opportunity to pursue. It's probably more of a mental exercise to go through the process for future ones down the road. I see this as a low probability. But if you're not thrown towards the end zone once in a while, you never will catch a hail mary pass.
Right. The other thing that I think is definitely important to keep in mind is for where we are on a number of different fronts with the level of development we're seeing right now, we're going through our comp plan process. There could be, before we have adopted our 2040 comp plan, there could be other opportunities that we maybe stand a higher likelihood of being successful in, if they align with some of the directives that this council and the community are really looking for in terms of, again, if we just focus on diversity of tax base. There may be other proposals that come along. I think what we're looking for is how do we navigate which ones we should work towards submitting responses to? And to what level of detail are you all comfortable with us starting on before we have another conversation?
So, I'm sorry, I'm also laughing, and you caught me. So, we've had comments back of, we don't want Walmart. This makes Walmart look like.
Well, this is, might have to eat something.
Right. Well, and to be fair, this type of RFP, because it's a nationally competitive thing, it doesn't come around that often where it has this level of investment and these characteristics. So, yes, in some cases, responding to this is changing everything, maybe we've thought about what that next phase of business development looks like. But so would anyone responding to this RFP, 'cause you don't get.
This changes everything.
A windfall like this.
I mean, let's be clear, there's probably corporate campuses with 50,000 employees. You can probably count the number in the entire country on one hand.
And they have one of them. Already.
And there may not be five.
Right.
So, this isn't just, no, different than what we've ever thought about. This is different than anybody's ever thought about.
Correct.
'Cause I would be shocked if Amazon projected they were gonna have 53,000 people in their Seattle headquarters 10 years ago or 20 years ago. I think this is a great exercise to think about what is our community? What do we want it to be? What differentiates us? You know, where, where do we see ourselves in 5, 10, 20 years? I frankly have no interest in this, just to be blunt. I think what it would bring to our community in terms of just, it would change everything. And, and in ways that I don't think the vast majority of people living in Victoria today have any interest in. It's why they live here.
Sure.
And so, when I say I'm not interested in it, I guess what I'm really saying is the people who voted me to come here and represent them would, would hunt me down with picks and torches if I said, let's throw everything we have at it. And I mean, the city staff is our most important asset and your time. And so, to me, the idea of dropping everything, even if it is for a few days, to chase it is.
That's where I come back to what gets pushed aside, let's balance that. And to your point, 50,000 people coming to a campus here? All right, that's bigger than Edina, Bloomington, the whole 494 Strip.
I think, I mean, just contemplate that, right? I mean, if they're actually right, and by the way, has anyone been to Seattle in the last few years?
Yeah.
I was there last fall, and they've got the worst traffic. I mean, granted, they've got other challenges with, you know, oceans and mountains and things. I wouldn't want to emulate that here.
Sure. And that's fair enough.
And I'm not trying to be overly negative, because I think that front-end piece about examining yourself and figuring out where you are and who you are is, is very valuable exercise. And hopefully, comp plan is, is part of how we do that.
To that note, can we pause the, we're all, I think, action-oriented people that like to get to the decision part. Can we walk more through this as an exercise before we get to whether we wanna do it or not?
Can, can we just talk about that? The benefit here would be to look at going south, and we've not done anything in that direction hardly at all. We do some thinking in, in the long-term planning process, but we really haven't done a good job of saying, what, no. Are we just gonna let the south sort of develop by itself? This tells us, if we had to get down there real quick, how would we do it? How would we afford it? And if we go down there, is there really the space for this kind of thing? I mean, where does our, where does the city limit, what do we bump up against?
We've got some stuff that we can go through.
Yeah.
Okay, and I didn't wanna completely just like drop this thing in its tracks. The last part I was gonna say is, but I do see a huge benefit also in talking with county and our neighboring communities to see, I mean, this is bigger than any one of us, right? In fact, it's bigger than all of us put together. But that aside, there is that kind of southwest regional picture that we should be helped, we should help draw on.
Right.
Well, and related to that, to get to, we've never quantified what we mean by a truly diverse tax base other than we want to diversify it more. And my belief is that to get to any level of diversity, it's gonna take a big win, a corporate campus of some sort and type. Some big entity is going to have to come here in order to make a dent and start pushing things the other way. We're not gonna get their building out downtown. And so, from that perspective, this exercise is beneficial. We may not get an Amazon, but we may be able to find something else that piggybacks on top of the data centers in Chaska down in that area, things like that. And that helps to trigger things.
Exactly, exactly. This tells us how to get a little Amazon. This'll tell us how we can start thinking.
That, that's the benefit that I see out of this and, you know, setting expectations that the value of this is the exercise in and of itself.
Sure.
I think is where I would be.
So, when I looked at this, the, I basically had the same thoughts. I don't really see us as a leading contender for this. But I also would agree that the exercise is probably beneficial because we'll get something other than an Amazon headquarters down there. And I think, at least from the comments I'm hearing here, that there potentially is a consensus among the council that we wanna diversify the tax base. That's the right way to do it. We're never gonna be able to do that here in downtown, quote-unquote, 'cause there's just no room, no space. So, the, to me, the value in, in, in the exercise, I'd hate to see the staff jump through a bunch of hoops on something that has little chance of success. But if there's benefit in, in making the connections with the other agencies, learning the process, getting educated, if you will, by going through it, I'd love to be able to get that experience and tuck it in our belt.
Sure.
And then use that for another opportunity that may be more realistic and better suited for the community and to what Councilmember Strigo was saying. I would, I guess if we, I don't know for a fact, but I guess if we were to survey the residents, they would not want a campus of that size right next to it, 'cause I think that would fundamentally change the nature of Victoria.
Sure.
And I, I'd be surprised if, if the majority of residents would support that kind of development. I think what they'd like to see is, is, you know, a small corporate campus or some commercial development. Do you have a bet you'd even support a grocery store down there?
Mm-hmm.
Right? But things along those lines. So, to Councilmember Crowley's point, I don't wanna put the staff between a rock and a hard place as far as other requirements that are on the plate. I don't know what kind of development or other things that would need to be.
Yeah, what gets pushed.
Yeah, what would get pushed if we did this.
There, there's enough. I would say we're all walking around with pretty full plates at the moment. I'd hate to start naming one, 'cause I'd probably forget half dozen another. But to Lori's point, I think what is starting to seem most important for us is, she was absolutely right. I get emails from Joel Akerson maybe once a month. Sometimes it's a couple times within one month. There are opportunities out there, so I think going through the process of at least giving you the information of what we saw in looking through this RFP and kind of getting your reaction as well as we start layering in some of the information, I think is gonna be healthy for us to know how do we deal with the smaller Amazon that has an opportunity to maybe fit more globally what Victoria residents are looking for in the community.
So, is there anything right now pressing that if you guys go do this, that, oh my gosh, we're gonna upset somebody and they're gonna walk away, or?
I don't know that we'd be in walk away, I think anger happens first. But yes, I mean, for the, for this scale of a project and given the right direction, I think certainly staff's response would be if this becomes an immediate priority, we would accommodate that. And it would be putting other things further out.
So, another question related to that, the, do we run, is there any risk here that you guys would see that, given the, the very short timeline and the full plates, that we could put together something that, that is reasonable and doesn't make us look as it's just a knee-jerk, you know, reaction, right? 'Cause I, I wouldn't want us to, to ask you guys to go through that exercise only to, to, because of the timelines, not having enough time to really do a, a good proposal and then hence actually hurt future chances by doing something kind of halfway instead of taking the time to do it right. I'd like to gain the experience, but I don't wanna do it as, as far as hurting us in the process.
That's a good point, but I think, I guess I think we could submit something that would be respectable. Everybody knows the timeline that's being operated on. The fact that the council. Uh, the fact that the council came together for a special meeting within a matter of few days. If we're able to come to some agreement that we wanted to submit something. Those things demonstrate a level of professionalism that I think the benefit if we decided to go that route would be getting on greater MSP's radar. For Joel to say, wow, I know that they had a week to put this together. Um, but look, their council was able to do this. They were able to come to agreement on these points. They were able to put together this level. Of a presentation. Uh, I can see that being a little bit of a head turner, like, oh, that community is really serious about wanting to be considered. Right, probably not for this one, but. What else do I know about, I'm speaking as if I'm Joel, what else do I know about? What other inquiries have I gotten? That maybe Victoria hasn't seemed like a natural fit for, but perhaps it's a bit of a of a pivot that. Yeah, oh, I hadn't thought about that. That might be a good fit. Cause I share that sentiment. If we were just gonna sorta. You know, get out a crayon and submit something that.
Do it right.
No, I mean, Bloomington, as an example, today locked up a purchase agreement for. A thirty-three million dollar piece of property that they would presumably contribute as part of their Amazon proposal. Um, but that's an example of what a community that is. Serious about economic development and wants to be ready to attract an Amazon. You know, that didn't just happen today. They've had that in the works for a long time. And that, you think you've all been saying it, but that's what we're really talking about here is.
So we've got thirteen and a half acres, five hundred stories.
They very specifically want a hundred acres.
Hundred hundred acre greenfield site, so and kinda where Lori was going with that, you know, we cold called. Joel.
Yep.
Just to say, you know, we read through the RFP, what's your initial reaction? And regard, the rest of it was getting into some level of details, but Joel ended the conversation by said. Regardless of whether you submit or not, I wanna come understand what this potential site is.
Yeah.
So we've already started to trigger just some influence in Joel's mind of. There might be a great fit that comes up that he wants to be prepared to react to as well, so.
It's worth it right there.
This whole just having the discussion, it's not just to show up today and say. We won't do something, it's we've already started to do something. How much more can we do, whether it's a full response to the RFP or. Just knowing as we build our comp plan and some other things that let's keep working towards. This level of information and position so that we'll be ready later.
So, Ben, do we have? For all intents and purposes, a marketing kit for Victoria?
Uh, we have a piece for our conditions today. We don't have that for what's that next wave of ten and eleven. Cause part of what we're doing in the comp plan process is trying to identify with the community. What is our ten and eleven actually? Is it a mirror of downtown? Is it something wholly entirely different? Do they complement or compete?
So.
That kinda thing.
Do you see potentially an outcome of the comp plan effort as. Then fleshing out that marketing Victoria kit to where. The next time somebody comes along, you don't have to convene a special meeting, you say, here's where we're going.
Correct. So part of the reason we're doing those two area plans with our comp plan, we're going to a finer grain of detail than most communities do. When they do their comp plan is so that we're ready not only for that next business. Uh, venture, but we've got quite a bit of density that we kind of abstractly talk about being south of Marsh Lake Road. Closer to ten and eleven. That's gonna give us a framework when someone says. You appear pose for an apartment project. We can say, this is generally where the community has said we want that to live and how it interacts with some of the other things going on in that area. Same thing with the west.
How big is the universe? If we go to ten and eleven and then go south and go west, how many? That, we're talking about a hundred acres here, but how big is that universe down there?
Yeah, just that area that's bounded by the county roads.
Well, it's.
Wasserman.
Future Victoria too.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So Marsh Lake Road, ten, forty-three, sorry, eleven, forty-three and ten.
So forty-three is.
There's over twelve hundred developable acreage, just in that quadrant.
So this is south.
Acreage, sorry.
Uh, don't remember off the top of my head.
Is is it south of ten is is Carver or Chaska? North of ten is is Victoria?
We have just a little sliver of road south of ten, and then it goes into future Carver.
Do we have a map by any chance?
Uh, I don't have that full thing, but.
You have a part of one, right?
I have, no.
We have the largest land area of Carver County.
Right.
It's able to be annexed.
But twelve hundred acres, that's ten times.
Developable.
What this would.
That's why I'll walk you through what we have in terms of what the site could be.
So this thing isn't, even if you consider the Amazon, it's 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 not gonna consume the whole.
Oh, absolutely not.
In any way, shape or form.
And to me, it's not that piece of how much would it consume, it's the density of that piece and.
But it's built out over ten years. I mean, we can't look at it like we're just gonna boom fifty thousand people.
Okay, but let's let's just pretend for a minute that five thousand people drop in here year one.
But it is.
That's five thousand employees with a family of three or four, we just got three times as big in one year, so. I get that it's phased, but.
It's almost where you put the testable point.
Right.
But it's, but it is on the south end and and much of that will. Will go down ten, down twelve.
I gotta say, I'm just shocked with the outcry over a hundred and fifty unit apartment building right there that. That we're kinda dismissing that.
Hundred and fifty, we're.
It's a very different proposal.
But yes. Yep, so we'll keep going.
Okay.
Alright, so just to highlight the site that we're talking about, so the top image just gives more of a regional context, so a lot of what was in this RFP. That I'd say is important to most larger sale corporate users, if they have people that come in for business meetings, what's your proximity to the airport? And then you layer in all the other things, hotels, all the accommodation type things if someone's gonna stay for. More than just a fly in, fly out type of a trip.
And you got flying cloud too.
Two hundred and thirty-three thousand hotels a year, is that what I saw?
Correct. So you can see the general blue point and pin for where we're generally sitting today, that's Victoria. The red dot is not the full size, but just that placeholder on this image of where our site is in relation to airport and some of the. More major inner city uh parts. Closer up image, so here's two twelve, County Road ten. So right off the intersection of County Road ten and eleven is kind of this triangle piece that's bounded by County Road eleven, ten and the railroad. So that's the piece that we're showing. These are draft concepts that our consultant's been working on, preparing for those area plans. Uh, so not finished and hasn't been really presented outside of it, but this was the the easiest and quickest way that I had. To start presenting, like, how do these acreages really lay out? So they've done an analysis on this quadrant. To determine where are some of those wetland areas, the low areas that are likely not able to be developed. Net acreage of kinda everything you see inside this triangle is about ninety-seven point eight acres as they have it. Plus, we have some contiguous property just on the other side of ten. That, again, if we're looking just at the Amazon RFP, that's still acceptable. It's all contiguous.
See thirty-three buildings here, so it's.
And they said it can be uh bounded by roadways, just as long as it's all generally within one condensed land area. So here you're seeing two potential concepts for the same area and I guess. Thinking about what they have in their R RFP, when they say there's thirty-three buildings, they don't specify what each of those thirty-three looks like. Um, but we do have the ability to respond to some level of proposal. As kind of our vision of what ten and eleven looks like as a d- density and diversity of uh uses. That this is more, uh, purple is intended to simulate kinda that potential business campus, maybe it's a flex industrial. Type uh area. Red is more of that traditional commercial land use, so it could be commercial office, could be more of the retail focused. And then some of the orange and dark browns is more of that residential integration into that, to that district, so. The slate is still wide open for us. These are gonna be presented more formally to the greater public and through our steering committee and stuff to get flushed out, but. I thought it was valuable at least to see, yeah, but you can at least see how. Getting some direction from even the broader community can inform how we start marketing and looking at different uses plugging into this area.
That's great.
Okay.
Do we, do we know, have you seen any pictures of the current Amazon campus? Did they build it themselves or did they buy buildings that were there? How, I mean.
They did a combination of both.
Right.
And do we know what that, I I don't know that that indicates.
Slide show, I can send you a link, but I don't have it.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely more urban, and I think what they've said in a lot of their RFP work is they don't need to be as urban as what Seattle is. I mean, if you think about just any company you've ever worked for, not everyone aligns with those same things. So while it works in Seattle. For the people and the culture they built there, coming to the Midwest as an example, the people and um. Employees they might recruit to move here might have a very different set of principles that being more suburban in nature might be acceptable. Okay.
There's a flip side. I mean, Am- Amazon is so big already, and then they're projecting this huge growth. If that would ever turn on that on them, things like that have been known to happen. We'd have all our eggs in one basket. So to speak, and we have a horrendous effect. So there's a risk here.
How'd you like to be Rochester, New York, right?
Yeah.
Fifty thousand of Kodak employees twenty-five years ago.
There's a, you know, there's rewards and risks, the risk is uh something this big if it goes south.
Well, I think the benefit, not, not that I wanna say this Amazon piece is the exact fit always. But the fact that they're doing multiple buildings that comprise one campus, I think you can have that conversation about how is it scaled? So it can be repurposed and broken down if they're not the final user always.
Sure.
Okay.
So I I'm hearing two things from the discussion. One. We've already got conversations going with Joel, which is kinda in the back of my head, was one of the benefits of participating in this. And if we've already accomplished that, um, uh, we can continue to foster those relationships. And then number two, uh, the comments related to getting a, some sort of a a uh marketing kit, if you will. That will probably come out as an extension of the comp plan that we can just deliver uh to any sort of entity that comes in. That seems to be a better fit, not necessarily a fifty thousand uh employee uh uh headquarters, right? The, um, so I'm I'm kinda getting to the point where I'm thinking, I don't think uh it's necessarily worth the time to. Drop everything and spend an entire week putting this together if we're already, if got Joel interested, we want wants to come out. And if we're going to get, be able to, uh, out of the comp plan process, develop a a market, so to speak, for this this area. Um, I think those will probably. Better use of resources, if you will.
Sure.
Um, uh, and Councilmember Rowan made a a great point, you you know, if we. Go down this path and and make that kind of commitment upfront and then something happens. Boy, that's, we're not big enough to take that kind of a hit. You know, somebody like Bloomington or, you know, Lakeville or some of the other communities around the metro. Uh, much bigger, uh, and they could absorb, you know, that kind of a upfront investment. I don't, I don't think the city of ten thousand people.
Sometimes if you don't swing for the fence, you're never gonna head it over.
Right, well, and the only thing I I, again, I don't wanna necessarily lose sight of before we leave. Is what happens between now and December of next year? If another proposal at a different scale comes that we wanna react to. We won't have the comp plan materials ready. We might be closer, but I think we wanna go through that dialogue with you about.
What I'm hearing you say is, everything you're doing here, if you go do this, is reusable.
It definitely has some merit of being reusable.
You just have to reengineer it a little bit, if somebody comes along.
What grain of sand are we getting, dude?
Yeah.
Well, I guess maybe poking at it from another direction. Can we leverage the comp plan work and resources? Maybe even some of the citizens to help answer some of these questions in a way that kind of accelerates it without taking us completely. Off task to do this.
Well, again, I come back to the question earlier, you know, what gets put off and and what does put off mean? Does it mean that? Some development moves two weeks to another council meeting, alright? Maybe we can live with that if it means. Some developer who's expecting to get approval at the next council meeting walks away, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
You know, there's nothing that's not gonna get done because. We're professionals and we're accustomed to doing this kinda thing. It's just gonna be a couple of extra weeks on everything. We're. Trying to continue to work with the thirteen and a half acres developer, you know, we're gonna just set that aside for a few more days. There's a comp plan meeting next week. Maybe that needs to be rescheduled a week, but there isn't, I think the way you asked the question earlier was good. Is there something that's gonna be lost if we take this time? And I don't think that that's the case.
And I don't see any downside.
Well, I guess I'd say that is, you know, I trust your professional judgment. If that came to your attention, you'd. Deal with it appropriately to make sure that didn't, that that trade didn't get made.
But I also, I think we're fine not. If we just say, well, you're right, this isn't the right opportunity and we don't submit anything, really, we wanted to, um. We wanted to have that question asked, uh, because we don't know, we didn't know the answer, looking through this. We've not done enough work as this council and on this topic. Uh, a big part of what makes Ben and I in particular successful is when we can sit down with the developer and they can say, okay. Here's my back of napkin idea, what will the council think? And we can kinda say, well, you know, the mayor has said this and Councilmember Crowley likes buildings with pink roofs and Councilmember Strigo likes. You know, yeah, um. Yeah, purple roofs.
Yeah, it's that gush reading that they're looking for, just to know whether it's worth their time to go to that next level of.
Let me ask the question a different way. What level of effort puts you in the best position to build a relationship with these people?
I think right now, if we can go through this discussion that Lori has set up with some of the questions that are here.
Be quiet.
No, but but honestly, I think part of the reason of even having this meeting is going through this exercise so that we're better positioned to support. The objectives that you all are driving for the residents.
So if we do go through with this and and put this all together, uh, from a, from a investment standpoint. Maybe it's not Amazon, but maybe it's another type of a campus. But from from Cara, from your point of view. What other, what would our investment be to to develop, to to make that leapfrog, to start working out? I mean. If everything did fall apart, if the Amazon started, they fell apart. I mean, there's, what is the downside? What is our initial investment? What, I mean?
So the last time we looked at this was maybe a year and a half ago, I think, and at that time I had estimated ballpark cost to be about four million dollars. To get sewer and water infrastructure down to that general area.
To serve this type of a site.
Which you're starting anti and you're bad.
And we have, we have the ability to get there now when we didn't before. We have easements in place with property owned by Lennar. Like, we physically could get there now, which we couldn't a couple of years ago.
Yeah, but those are like development agreement. Triggers, I mean, there there are legal things that we can do to protect ourselves in those instances and I.
Right.
Sure, it might not have, it might get canceled, but if we build the business partnership correctly, those risks are mitigated.
Right, and I and I agree. I think just going through the exercise, putting our name out there, getting us in the spotlight.
And I think it's. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt if you were done or.
Go ahead.
Uh, what I would say, I think the important thing is to to know that, right, is. If somebody came to us, be able to say, we could be there in six months for four million dollars. I mean, I don't think we wanna start laying pipe in the ground and bury four million dollars without some commitment, something that's gonna start. Paying the debt service on that, paying some property taxes.
Level of investment, your risk reward is that you're not gonna lay the pipe unless they're also committing to dump.
Right, but I think we've all agreed, this isn't probably gonna happen.
And I'm saying this as an abstract, it's a proposal, so you're always gonna weigh is the proposal at hand. Getting you what you need in terms of a safer turn on an initial investment, so that you're not just. Putting this four million dollar pipe to nothing or something that doesn't even recoup some reasonable part of your investment.
Right, and so, but but the four million dollars, and I I don't know, I still have a hard time imagining that you can put a fifty thousand. Person campus down there and it's the same size pipe as you would for.
I haven't asked, I haven't asked me to look at that yet.
Yeah, that aside, I I think that four million dollars is relatively four million dollars. No matter what, and so it gives you, if you if you kinda harden those numbers and you know. Time and money, what it's gonna take to do it, you're much better positioned to answer. The next guy and the next guy and the next guy and be ready to say, you know, if you'll, if you'll. you know, if you'll, if you'll build it, we'll come. Right? So I, I mean, again, I, I think there's a lot of value to this exercise, but it may not be necessarily in figuring out how to support this per se.
Sure. When we say we gotta spend four billion bucks to get sewer down south, where's the interceptor right, right now? Uh, we're, we're talking about the, the, the big flow is coming from the metropolitan interceptor.
So right now, our connection point is uh, just southwest of the intersection of Red Fox and Martin Gale. So southwest corner to the Victoria lawn entry school, that's where our connecting point is. And we have an agreement, as Cara noted, with Lennar to get it down to Marsh Lake Road. And from there, we're forcing sewer up to that point and we, we have some routes that we.
Which way is it flowing now, are we flowing north?
It goes to highway seven.
It comes up to right out here.
Yep.
So we'd be, we're flowing north and we're gonna go push pipe south.
Correct.
The major interceptor is Smith Town and Seven, right?
But is there, there's another point in the interceptor, um, Shak- Shakopee, isn't there?
Under the river.
Yeah, there's a bunch of.
Our sewer all flows north to.
Cause it, isn't this gonna change the dynamics of all the sewers in the whole area?
Well, yeah, there's things to answer if we're looking at a fifty thousand, how many wrecks is that?
So I mean.
Could I get a sack determination from that council?
Probably changing the whole flow of the metropolitan sewer system if you really.
Probably build another treatment.
No, but bu- build another treatment plant for this. I mean, so the idea that we're just gonna run pipe down there maybe is naive in the first place because this is so big. But it would be realistic if we were thinking about smaller projects.
Correct, and I, our, our sewer is sized contemplating a corporate campus and everything that, you know, the ideas that are coming up in the comp plan process aren't terribly different than what was in the last comp plan in terms of the idea of diversifying tax base and having additional
Right.
things down there that were influenced the sizing of our sewer pipe and that council's investment in sewer.
We're more just refining the where, where down there is it going?
Do we, does comp plan contemplate, okay, so we, we, we talk about zoning, what kind of development, commercial, light, detail, whatever, office, campus, does it contemplate the number of bodies that are working in those buildings?
We have some background, so the sewer that Cara's talking about has been sized to accommodate X amount of bodies essentially that are in that whole area. So.
Well, and I don't know, but I guess I'm thinking that the, the residential wreck and a commercial office wreck are different.
They're all allocated based upon what that big bubble land use had been in our twenty thirty comp plan. So we assign numbers based upon what those meant to quantify how big that sewer needed to be to support it all.
Do you happen to know what?
Not offhand, that's way too engineering for.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Right.
I'm thinking people.
Yep.
Right.
Offices, people.
It is a lot, so.
It's a lot, I don't, I don't know, I just looked at them probably two weeks ago, but I don't remember the numbers. But all, you know, yeah.
You'd have to have, you know, a place for the light rail corridor too, no way.
We do, well, that's, I was gonna mention, we have the rail spur that was already considered to be, they already considered putting light rail down that same railway.
Oh, down the tracks that cross just north of there? Well, that is the border then.
This is probably a good exercise.
Is that railroad have any, I mean, is the rail, is the railway intending to keep that as a major cor- rail corridor for the?
As of right now, yes.
Defined future.
Correct.
Yeah, there's four to six train a day on that. It's um, not a high speed railway, so if it were ever to be used for, it wouldn't be light rail, but it would be commuter rail, heavy rail, but same idea.
The North Star line.
Yes, yep, the tracks would have to be upgraded to accommodate that, but it could be.
Okay.
I think um, just getting the council sort of and our, and staff's head back in where we're going with the comp plan and maybe help making sure the council understands that we haven't forgotten about ten and eleven. We have gotten utility estimates, you know, we're on, we're on sort of a timeline. We, we're working on a comp plan now, that's the next step. After that, we've already started to preliminary, think about how would we pay for that utility extension, area charges, things like that. Uh, and we're sort of internally programmed to continue to think those things out and bring them to you over the next year, year and a half, you know, between now and next December. Um, so if nothing else, a good outcome of the meeting is for the council to have that broader awareness that we are working on how we'll facilitate the development of ten and eleven and haven't been forgotten about. Uh, it's just not ready yet. Uh, one of the things in terms of extending those utilities is uh, we want Lennar to go first. There's a part that they're gonna extend, but if we got something like an Amazon, we have the ability to say, okay, we don't, we're not waiting for Lennar anymore, we're doing this on our own. Um, but because we see Lennar systematically moving in that direction, right now it seems to just make sense for them to continue to go before we pick up that ball and run with it.
Have we seen any development interest south of Marsh Lake yet?
We are just starting to. I think a lot of, one of the nice things about being in the comp plan process and also just timing of where we've been with general growth headed that direction is there's a, a small handful of property owners along the eleven corridor that goes down to ten that have all expressed willingness through some of our um, meetings for the comp plan that should development be ready to develop their properties, they're in a position of being willing to sell. So that alone just gives us some triggers. We've got a couple of people that are in ag reserve, preserve until twenty nineteen, so that'll actually feel like it's happening tomorrow if um, the right developer walks in and makes a proposal for them that will be maybe not as willing to wait for Lennar. We might be having that kind of, almost a similar conversation to this about if development's ready to go, we might want that because it leads us that much closer to ten and eleven for that next base of uh, development commercially.
To diversify the tax base.
Right.
Was there more that you wanted to walk us through, Lori?
You know, um, there was, but we've kind of gone in a different direction than what we anticipated and I know we were trying to keep at the six thirty goal. So I am okay with the feedback we've gotten here to just say, you know, we enjoyed having the opportunity to look at it, it's not right for us. I though, I think the one thing I would ask is, is there interest in submitting a letter of support to your MSP for whatever site is selected? Or would we just like to be hands off in this RFP process? As long as it's far, far away.
What, again, what, what puts you in the best position for building relationships that you want to see?
See, and that's kind of my thinking behind submitting a letter of support. If we're amenable to the idea of Amazon picking Minnesota, I think that's a nice way to quickly demonstrate we have our act together, we had a special meeting, we considered it, it's not right for us and we're not gonna waste your time within our FFP response. But certainly Victoria has benefited from Cargill, Best Buy, Target being located in the Twin Cities. We think this would be, you know, another great opportunity for us to pick up residence and ancillary businesses. So whatever site you pick, greater MSP indeed, you know, Amazon state, we think that's a great idea and we welcome you to Minnesota.
Do, do, have we had dialogue with our neighbors and economy about this? I mean, I, I could imagine easily putting together sort of a, a letter of support that um, says this sort of region of the metropolitan area has a lot of the things you want. And maybe it's a little further east and closer to one sixty-nine or something, but we would absolutely with that magnitude of a campus, would absolutely feel the impact of that and we'd like to support that and we, you know what I'm saying there? It, it, to me, it's not an all or none necessarily.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea. I mean, if it's Bloomington, that's gonna have an impact on Victoria too. Like they're gonna live here, they're gonna come out here, I mean, that's, we're gonna notice that. Is that something I could, um, we have then time because only the initial proposals are due September twenty-second. So I could draft a letter, I could find out if other communities are interested in circulating a joint letter, a similar letter. And uh, we could talk about that briefly next Monday at our regular council meeting if you'd like.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Sounds good.
Some interesting stats, there, there's an article I'll send you the link Lori that you can pass around, but this is in the Star Tribune. The largest employer in the state right now is Mayo at forty thousand.
Wow.
And Wells Fargo is twenty thousand and three M is thirteen.
Wow. That really gives good.
Four X three M.
Yeah.
Fascinating.
And that's not just in.
One location.
Right.
Yeah. Well, and part of that is why Minnesota is not considered a leading contender.
You know, I mean, I think about places like Detroit.
Oh, my God.
What would, how many empty buildings do they have? How many empty houses do they have? How many acres of urban, absolutely uninhabited urban area do they have sitting there just waiting for somebody to do something and it's all moral less free?
It literally is almost free.
I appreciate you being willing to get together on short notice. Like I said in my email, we like to talk about thinking big and I'm happy that the outcome is we're not gonna do anything, but I'm glad that we took the time to evaluate it.
Thank you for leading that. I, I.
Good conversation.
Can we ask one more question before we go? So in terms of other RFPs that may come in the near future, is this level of process good for, for you all? I mean, I kind of heard through the discussion, just me interpreting what everyone's been saying, but it sounds like as we're doing other things that kind of build our toolbox to be able to respond to this, certainly do that, but you're not opposed to considering more of these should they come in?
No, I think we should, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I agree.
We, we need to get intelligent about this, this whole.
It's gonna take one of these to do what we wanna do from a diversity standpoint.
I mean, the beauty of this is we're in a position where we can kind of pick and choose a little bit, right? I mean, we've got absolutely a great set of attributes for this area. And now it's really picking the right fit and the right timing to take advantage of it. Uh, that's why I see it, so yeah, all the things you're doing to me are just.
Great job, guys. Uh, Lori, do we need, uh, since we're not having a council meeting after this, do we need to adjourn this or do we just?
Yeah, we'll just adjourn it and.
All right, we don't have to do it formally though, since it's official?
Right.
Okay. Uh, council, any final comments?
I'm glad we did it.
Glad we did. Good, good exercise, thanks for pulling it together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're done, folks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, if you wanna grab a slice of pizza, there's two pizzas on the middle counter.